We're all set and recording.
Darn robe.
I don't want her next to me. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now recording live. Bush is going to lead us in the dedication pledge.
Bow our heads, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you again thankful of the privilege and honor that we have to serve our citizens. We ask, Lord, you be with us tonight as we conduct the business of the city, help and guide us in everything that we decide. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Higginbotham?
Present.
Henson, absent. Permaner?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Sanders?
Here.
Haw?
Here.
Rodell, absent. And for the record, Sue Ashcraft, our city clerk, is absent as well. So I will be doing her job. Bear with me, counsel. You know how it works, right?
Looks like Kopey's next.
Yes, Kopey's, please. This meeting is now called Order at 6:30 in the evening on Tuesday, May 25, 2021, and this is Bryant City Council Regular Council Meeting, and we are meeting at 210 Southwest Third Street. And with that, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is the April 27, 2021 minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table these until the next council meeting since they were not attached to our agenda.
There's a motion to table these until the next regular council meeting since they were not attached to the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Next item is presentations and announcement. We have Central Arkansas Water. I believe Mr. Bohannon is coming up.
I do have a few PowerPoint slides, and so we could have those. Mayor, council, thank you all very much for the opportunity to be here. Just so you can go to the next slide, but just in case you all don't know, we have had a 33-year partnership with Bryant. This is our service territory here. You can see the area in blue, we serve directly where those are our retail customers. The area is in green, our wholesale customers, and you see the list of wholesale customers, and of course Bryant is one of our wholesale customers. But that shows you, we were created in 2001 with the merger of Little Rock and North Little Rock's water departments, and that's how we came about. Next slide, please. So what am I doing here? There it is. Like I said, we've had a partnership for about, since 1988, when Bryant made the decision to join up. And I think the last bullet is the biggest point of what am I doing here? And that is, we have about 145,000 customers, a little more than that. Out of those, Bryant is number two. You are about a $1.2 million line item on our budget every year as far as purchasing water from us. And so we want to make sure that we have an open communication. We want to make sure that we work together on things. We want to make sure that you all are happy. One of the things that is discouraging is when we say, hey, we're going to go talk to Bryant, and if there's any animosity or any feeling, why would we want them to come talk to us? Then that's a concern, and that's my fault. I'll take the blame for that. That means we have not been communicating with you enough. We haven't been a good partner with you, and we need to improve that. So we're starting that right here, right now, all right? We have met in past at times, and we've said, hey, we're here, call us. If nobody calls, we didn't do anything about it. That's wrong. We ought to be reaching out to you more, and we're going to do that. We have, there's a young lady who's my government affairs officer now. Her name is Chelsea Boozer. Her saw a nod, knows who she is. There will be her contact information at the end, but we will be getting that to all of you in case you ever have any questions, Government Affairs, because that's the title we wanted to use. You all are government, but you're also a wholesale customer. So we can go to the next slide. Now, we started asking about if we could come and present the page when you all were looking at your rate studies. And part of that as a partner, we wanted, this slide should not be new to you. This slide was presented to you all as part of your all studies that you were looking at when you all were looking at your rate adjustments. One of the things that we immediately noticed, for instance, is it says in 2022, there's going to be a rate increase to $1.47. There's not. We've already set our rates for 2022. In fact, we're doing our rate study for the next period of time in '22, but our rates for 2022 are already fixed, and there's no increase for wholesale customers. All right? Go on to the next slide, please. The other is, that's not going to happen. Now, I'm going to lay something out for you, and we can talk about this later. I want to come back and talk with Public Works and come back to talk with the mayor. But I can almost guarantee you that for Bryant, not only will there not be a rate increase, but there will be a rate reduction. And if there is not a rate reduction in January of 2022, call me back up here and say, Tad, explain to us why there was not a rate reduction. Okay? And I'll be glad to do that. But I can almost guarantee you that there'll be a rate reduction in 2022. That's part of where we've got to communicate better and got to, everybody's writing it down. Please do. Put it in your day planner, put it on your, put it in your phone, however you do it. I'm sure that, that is not one that will slip past people, I'm sure. So next slide, please. So the other thing that seems to constantly come out, and this is a concern of mine, is that, in fact, it was directly on one of your rate consultant's slides, your rate increases are a result of CAW rate increases. Verbatim, you know, from one of your consultant's slides. If you look at that, and this is one of your consultant's slides that we just put the lines on top of. That's what they projected our rate increases to be. And those two lines between your water rates from us versus your total rate are not parallel. So I don't mind being thrown under the bus when CAW deserves to be thrown under the bus, but I'm going to call to question on that one, because the rate increases are not, there may be a factor, but it is not because of rate increases at CAW. Next slide, please. So this is another slide you all had, and it showed up in your November rate consultant things, and it shows CAW Little Rock, which is CAW at Little Rock wastewater. Those are the red boxes. CAW with North Little Rock, those are also red boxes. And then it shows Bryant Current. Now, this is back in November, and Bryant Proposed. And so go to the next slide, please. And this is what came in January. CAW is no longer seen anymore. It shows Bryant Current. And so the next slide, please. If you pop in the light, one of the light blue bars on these screens, a little bit harder to see, but you see current Bryant of $80.14, and I'm just using your rate consultant's numbers. CAW Current is 67.77. So take those numbers straight out of your rate consultant's presentations. Next slide, please. Why am I here tonight? What I'm here to do is say, can CAW help our number-two customer out of 145,000 customers? That's all I'm offering. Is there a way we can help our number-two customer out of 145,000 customers? You look at those water and wastewater bills totals, there's a delta of about $13.37. Next slide, please. If you just look at water, that delta becomes $14.31. CAW versus Bryant, just for the water portion, and that is just for water. That is your base charge plus your volumetric rate. Okay? On both sides. Next slide, please. So one of the things that I often hear so much is CAW water, CAW water is so expensive. Okay? So those numbers were calculated by your consultant using 5,000 gallons. There's 748 gallons per CCF. We bill by the CCF, not by the 1,000 gallons. That's 100 cubic feet. That means there's 6.68 cubic, 100 cubic feet in the 5,000 gallons. Multiply that by your current rate of $1.44, that's $9.62 of that is water. So even if we gave you the water for free, we're not going to do that. Not going there, all right? But even if we gave you the water for free, there would still be a delta of $4.69 between the two bills for water. If you go to '22 rates, ours are fixed, you all have already done your rate ordinance for '22, too, the differential gets even bigger. Instead of 14.31 on the total bill, it's 15.89, and if we gave you the water for free, the differential becomes $7.61. So what I'm here to say is, can we work with you all as a partner, as our number-two customer, to help you all reduce that delta? I know, and I know that even other communities have said, oh, CAW's coming, they're coming to take you over, all right? I can't take you over. CAW cannot take you over. There is no such thing as a hostile takeover in municipal water. It just doesn't happen. For those of you that don't know, I used to be a lawyer, and I was involved in M&amp;A work. I understand hostile takeover. They don't work in this, in this arena. So how is it that we can help our number-two customer? Next slide, please. So what does this partnership look like? It could be services, that we just provide services to Bryant to reduce your cost, so that then your operating costs are less, you've reduced that delta. It could be shared services. It could be things we do together that reduces costs and makes it more efficient. It could be management of certain areas. It could be consolidation, but that's your all's decision, not ours. Okay? And that's just the whole thing. You say, well, what are those services that you could look at? Information sharing has got to become more open. I'll do my best to work on it, but information sharing has got to be more open. Employee training, board training. Do you all know that under Act 665, you all, unless you've been on the board for 10 years, you now have to have eight hours of training in municipal operations by December 30th, 2022? Maybe we could help with training, so you're not going out and hiring an outside consultant to come in and do your training, thereby impacting your operating costs. Engineering, purchasing, accounting, maintenance, billing services, customer service, emergency services, rate configuration, we can help in a whole lot of variety in different areas. We have people on staff already, all right? They're part of what we do. That's one of the advantages of being 145,000, $70 million budget utility. I mean, you just have more resources available to help our partners and help our customers. Next. And I know the mayor asked me to be brief, so I'm trying to be as brief as possible. Past partnerships, everybody's heard about Montel. It was a full consolidation. Pairing was a different case. We have some small systems that a court came and said, court orders, CAW, you will run this system, because they were struggling so much and so much trouble. And so we're operating small systems in a court order. Some communities, 145th Street, for instance, just, they had to grasp your efforts. They said, we need some help. Can you come help us out? And so we came and helped them out. Billing partners, and one of that was one of the services, for instance, that I listed, we already have billing partners with water, wastewater utilities, solid waste, neighborhood associations. Talk, how many POA presidents have you talked to that say, you know, the hardest thing we have doing is collecting our booze to run our swimming pool or our neighborhood association? Guess what? We say, hey, you can stick it on the bottom of your utility bill, and you'll get it paid over 12 months, and we can do that collection for you. I mean, so there are ways to partner and be partners with you. Next slide, please. So that's it? I mean, the kind of wraps this up. Economies of scale, potentially lower rates, you know, improve relationships. That's the three things that come out of me being here, I hope, and maybe a greater partnership between the two utilities. Next slide, please. So we're willing to do the work. We're willing to come in and look at things and see, is there a place where we can help close the gap between the two bills? Is there a way that we can help Bryant become more efficient and a better? We may not be, we may walk out of here and say, you know what? You all do things so that we can't help you. All right? That delta may be there just because there's a difference we have between having the number of meters, I mean, that Bryant has and the number of meters that CAW has. Nothing can be done about. But we may be able to. We're able to do that work to look at it. We'd ask you all to partner with it. There are cooperations to be required. We can't just come in and say, here's what we can do for you, without knowing some background information to be able to look at and say, okay, here's where maybe some efficiencies could be found. Here's where we may make you do things better. Next slide, please. So we're here to offer to explore. There's my information. She's now got this slide probably captured on her computer, and she can share it out with all of you. Chelsea is there, too, and like I said, we'll send that out via email to all, to the mayor or whoever you want that to go to, so you can get it out to all the council members. But we're here.
You can actually have us send it to Dinah, and she can get it out there.
Okay. But we're here, and we want to improve that relationship. Whether, whether you say, Tad, we don't want your help, that's fine. I just want you to know that we're here. We want it to be a positive relationship, and we're here to work with you if we can help you out in any way. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
Ted, I've got a couple. On that 90, 100-day, 120-day study that you talked about, is that free to the city? Have you guys just?
Other than your time that you're, I mean, somebody on, we're going to.
Somebody's going to have to pay for it. That's all we're.
We're paying for it. Other than, we're going to call up and say, hey, we need this information, and somebody in Bryant's going to have to take the time to get us that information.
Got you.
And that may be hard to come by. That time may be hard to come by.
Yeah. You talked about the 2022 rate reduction by city. That's on the wholesale numbers, right? Or, so that's not looking at anything in the future? That's just looking at wholesale numbers right now. That rate reduction's going to happen in 2022.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions from council? No. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Next up is the Animal Control and Badge Pinning and Award Presentation. However, Trish had to do an emergency trip to Dallas to deliver a dog through a rescue program, so she's not going to be here this month. We're postponing that until next month. And her department report will be postponed as well, so. So I guess next up, we have engineering, his update, et cetera. And the consent administrative order, I guess, is going to follow right after that or the safety.
That's it. Matter of fact, we're just going to spend a little time on that. I was also asked to be brief, because you all know how well I'm doing public speaking. So I've actually presented some graphs, all right, and some data there to go along with the consent administrative order. We were asked to kind of produce a quarterly report. So we're kind of beginning over and going back, and we're looking at, you know, the program we started in 2018, which Chris Engineering laid out for us. It kind of projected basically an eight- to nine-year program, where we'd be spending something like $17 million. So we're trying to spread that out and take advantage of our good public works department on doing as much of the work as we can, as possible. And as a result of the, you know, the previous hole on getting through the rate study, which was a moving issue, we're kind of beginning, getting our operations up. So there's a, let by 17 sheets that has kind of all the in-the-weeds numbers. So basically, our consent administrative order is to, for us to improve our system, which, what we've identified is we have a capacity issue. As you guys know, what put us back into that was a sanitary sewer overflow. We have so many of those every so often, that forces the consent administrative order. They kind of settled that to be a capacity issue. If we have so much water coming into the system that we can't get it down the line, it overflows, and then that causes the problem. That's identified as infiltration and inflow. We recognize that within the system and in our distribution system as being means of coming in through line breaks, bad manholes, or, or systems of the lines are really busted and are bringing in a lot of water. So those are the three things that we key on for our consent administrative order. And so if you look at that, those are kind of split out, like I said, manhole rehab, manhole rehab, point repairs, and infiltration and line rehab. So this will be kind of basically our quick sheet that you'll see going forward quarterly. And this has those broken out into those pieces. Now, as I said, we're looking at spending somewhere in the next year, $17 million over a 10-year period. Well, if you look initially at the line rehabs, we're only seeing that we need something like $2 million. But that's an ongoing thing. We're currently looking at every basin we have. We've only examined two basins. We've got seven basins total. Tim Fornier and I are meeting with them to continue on with that on the next basin. So as we proceed further, you will see that the, the blue line will keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and we'll end up chasing it. But in the end, we hope to have this chart filled out with all the dollar figures and all the infiltration numbers, as well as however many requests that we get as a result of those basins to do the repair. Am I going too fast, or do I need to?
I need to ask a question. The sanitary overflow, is that all the way back to 2015?
Yes.
That started all of this in a rapid race?
We got out of the consent order in that process, I think, before that, and then we had a couple of SSOs, is what they call, and then ADP said, you need to go back into consent administration.
Okay.
So since then, we've done quite a bit better job of keeping those numbers down, but we have to look at the system as a whole. Just, just because we got a growing city, we got a lot of capacity that's coming in, and then eventually, you got to look at your plant and make sure you don't overrun it, so.
So we haven't had an overflow since then? We've been able to?
No, we actually had had overflow since then, but not as many.
Okay. Sorry.
No, that's, that's probably all right. Like I said, I wanted to keep it brief, and if you guys wanted to ask questions or even send me questions, I can respond to that. But like I said, going forward, we'll start getting these numbers to where you guys will look at it more often on a quarterly basis, and probably just be a really brief presentation. Is that it?
Any other ques, any questions?
Yeah. Are we going to follow up with a workshop on this, or on?
I don't see a reason.
No, I mean, is there a workshop coming up?
Yeah, that's discussion. I mean, I think we set the date.
Yes, that, we're still pending you guys' date, but what we're looking at is a, basically associated with the Slane County Recent Public Water Association. They're just looking at the straw, just because they've had some advancements in it, and we want to make sure that we're still in, in track to be part of that.
So that's just water only?
That's water.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
And that's, I think, right now, we're shooting for June 9th on that date.
Okay. So we don't need to bring this, is what I was getting at?
No, ma'am.
I have a question. I just want to verify, the $17 million plan?
Yes, ma'am.
What year did that start? 2018?
That was roughly about 2016, 2017 is when we identified it. And like I said, that's just a projection, because it's basically saying, hey, you've got this much mileage of collection system. Assuming that you've got this level of I&amp;I, and it's going to take that long to fix it, probably will take around this amount of money to do it, too.
Okay. And when I'm looking at this piece here, I notice the point repairs, manhole, and all that don't have any.
No, like I said, as we proceed, we'll get those filled out, so that we'll know.
So, but we are sitting at, it looks like for line rehabilitation, about 2.1 million, you say?
Yes, ma'am, as a level of request. Now, one of the things that we're trying to do is do that with as much of public work forces as possible. Last year, we invested in some really good equipment, the piper stuff, I believe we had a presentation on it. That's going to save us money in the long run, but we can't, we don't know just yet how much money that is going to save us.
And haven't we had some upgrades to the plant?
We have. We've increased the capacity.
Probably everybody needs to.
For our first capacity of our plant, for the center piece plant, we did that in 2017. It was like a $1.6 million to $2 million improvement. I mean, that, that did improve the capacity of the plant. But that is not really geared towards the consent action. This is really as a result of trying to handle those sanitary sewer overflows, so.
And we've done about a million of them, actually, spending.
Yes, that's, that's correct, ma'am.
So if you're looking at that on a 10-year plan?
Yeah, and, and we are behind, and then also, like I said, we don't have, we don't have monies captured associated with the point repairs that we've done, as well as the manhole rebuilds. Feel free to comment. Feel free to comment at any time if you have any questions.
Same question.
And I will move on to the wonderful world of public comments. A couple of faces out there. I wonder if there may be some public comments tonight. If so, step up and remember you have three minutes. Take your name, address, and all that good stuff. Mr. Jason Brown.
Right, sorry, Brian Chambers. I'm Jason with the Chamber. Put yourself on those, if you can find you. We want to invite you guys to a special event Friday night for the airshow. It's an invitational dinner, and a private airshow the night before. The airshow, I think. We've invited the Ben City Council, the Airport Commission, we're gonna invite the foreign courts, and some state people as well. It's gonna be a pretty big deal. The airshow's grown quite a bit since the last time we talked. We get all kinds of stuff coming, guys. We get helicopter rides, we get all.
Wow.
It's a thing. We get calls from Mexico, Canada, Washington. It's big. So it's gonna put us on the map, so we're pretty excited about it. So we'd love to see you guys there. RJ, Miss Ron have helped out drastically. We've got billboards out across the entire state. They're in Northwest Arkansas to Central Arkansas. The radio ads started this week. We've got TV when everything's gonna be hitting on this. It's gonna be pretty big, so.
We highly encourage everybody to go to your Central Arkansas Big Red store.
Oh, yeah.
Purchase your tickets.
Yes, in advance.
We've got tickets for sale in all thirty-three locations in Central Arkansas. You can buy them on the website as well. VIP tickets. We've started a Overlook Telkien area. Butch asked me about that a minute ago. So there's all kinds of stuff for everybody to do, so. And we're already wanting to show up for next year. Yeah, so.
Good.
But Jake, ladies and gentlemen, we're excited about it, so thank you all.
Thank you.
But y'all, make sure you come to this. It's here for cool.
I'm pretty sure. Any other public comments? Mr. Pelkington?
Good evening. My name's Don Pelkington, and me and my fiancee, Kate Prokop, live at one fifteen Monticello Drive. Our objective tonight is to bring a resolution of the flooding issue to a proper solution on Monticello Drive. It's the big basin that's where we're having trouble with. During the most recent heavy rainstorm, the water basin directly across the street from our home overflowed and went across Monticello Drive. The culverts that are currently in place cannot discharge the stormwater quickly enough as it accumulates in the basin, causing stream flooding and erosion to our yard. Since two thousand eight, flooding of this basin has been a constant concern during our heavy rains. On May twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, just before they finished doing the new culverts, it's called, after the culverts were installed, water was still running up with erosion at that time. I asked the engineer from Garnett about the issue, if there's a response to it, that the basin needed to be cleaned out and deepened. This has been done, yet the problem still exists, no improvement. The dam at the youth servicing pond has been slowly eroding until there's very little of the dam left. It's causing great bank erosion, which eventually ends up in the stormwater basin. There is great need for structural sound dam with regulating release of water to help keep the water back and filling the basin up. It's my belief that the dam belongs to Stone Brook developers. There are many storm drain culverts into the basin, which quickly overloads the basin. A daily property working, a properly working drainage system would be in place before any new construction or points be initiated. More than, more homes means less ground absorption and more runoff water. Which, with the plan of at least seventy-five new homes being put in in this area, we ask you to put a halt to any new construction until this is fixed. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Seeing nobody getting up, I'm assuming there's no more public comments.
Ma'am, before we move on, can we ask Troy a question about the stormwater in that area?
Sure.
Hey, Troy, have we?
You can ask engineer about it as well.
Or Ted. I just, I thought Troy was in charge of stormwater. I just, have we had a chance to look at Mr. Pelkington's area? Just I think what he's wanting to do, and I know he reached out to all of us via email, and I think he just wants answers, and I figured since he came tonight, if we could figure out, have we looked at it? Have, I mean?
We have. I mean, it was one of those that we did that repair back, I think, two years ago, as far as improving the culvert system across the street between his house. We did put an overflow section so that when it does come across Monticello, you know, it transfers into, you know, further down the drainage basin. It's supposed to be designed for a hundred-year event, but he did bring up a very, very big concern about the youth services dam that's up there. It is eroded. It's not a, it's just a natural weir. It could stand and have some improvements coming to it.
And that's not ours, though, right?
It does not belong to the city.
Yeah.
The portion of the levy belongs to a private developer, as well as a portion of it belongs to the youth services. So it's kind of a complicated thing if they're to do that. It's not identifiable as something that would help the situation.
Is the basin he's talking about, is that city-owned, or is that P O A? I mean, that's not.
It's individually owned by the property owners that backed up to it. We don't allow that.
Okay, so that was done, well, because I was wondering if that thing could be dug out deeper? And like I said, I'm talking as, I don't know, I'm not in you guys' world, so I'm just asking questions.
It has been in the past, and actually, the city's engaged in cleaning it out on their own nickel per se. We've actually cleaned out this past year by the developer after the dam released. And that developer is also making improvements to that dam. We tried to do enforcement action on them, so they immediately got off. If you drive out of the basin, you can see it's recently been dug out. It's, I believe, over sixty loads of dirt out there.
Okay.
The homes that are on each side of that basin, actually owned out into the middle of that basin. They just stopped their yards with spans up above it. But they actually own all that property.
Okay.
That's where we stuck the goats a few years ago.
It's like this is where the goats are.
The goats down there. It is still called the goat basin, unfortunately. Yeah, the goats were not sold.
I'm pretty sure there won't be goats put there.
No, no.
They didn't help much.
The city doesn't own it.
Entertained a few, neighborhood kids.
Kids love to feed them, you know, I would always say that.
Oh, yeah.
So we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is, we have an old business, so the next item is Finance, a resolution accepting proof of record destruction authorized by ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash eight.
Does anybody have any questions on this item?
Did Butch do a good job?
He sure did.
All right.
Handles every one of them. Some of them twice.
Since it was Butch, I would make a motion to appraise.
I'll second that. Motion by, to approve by Ms. Meyer, second by Mr. Hawk.
I think at some point, we need to get Butch a plaque that says, Mr. Destructor.
Yeah.
Terminator.
Yeah, Certified Terminator, yes.
Release for records, yes, for records. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. It is Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash eight.
We don't know on the plaque.
Get on to the next item now. Next item is Presentation and Approval of the Two Thousand Twenty-One April Year-To-Date City Financial Report.
Motion to approve.
Having motion to approve by Mr. Higginbotham.
Second.
I have a question.
Second by Ms. Sanders. And discussion.
Is the meter change out with Mueller underway yet?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, that's.
As of today, at the start of today.
And that's going on for how many years?
No, it should be done in three months.
Three months? All of them will be changed out?
That is the hope.
Okay. That's even better news than what I expected.
They're supposed to have fifteen hundred done by month, because that'll work with me.
That's all the ones that fail.
Over four thousand.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, that's.
And there's more on order, so I mean, we're, yeah. We're, yeah, we are meeting, well, online, but then once a week, keep up the data, so. And then, control manager Bryce, Thursday, and my left little friend, but, so.
That'll help with the meter reading, being more accurate, and everything flowing better. And it's been how many years, like ten years, since we updated them?
We would run out of warranty if we didn't do something.
Okay.
So does this eliminate the person to go read it, or does it?
It minimizes that person.
Who reads it electronically?
Yes.
But a person doesn't have to go out and read it?
Except for the ones that don't read. That's the problem right now.
Yeah, but once we get this fixed, we should.
Yeah.
Right, but we're really. Is that our metering?
Yes, sir.
She does a great job, too.
Frequent stops behind that vehicle.
Any other questions?
Our sales tax is still.
Yes, actually.
I'll talk about that in a little bit. How's that?
Oh, you're gonna say something else about that?
I'll say something about sales tax a little bit.
Oh, okay. Surprise.
I got a sneeze in there.
Okay.
Still enjoys thunder.
That's all I have.
Joy got that Amazon check.
Could very well be that. Could very well be. So we have motion for, and a second for the approval of Two Thousand Twenty-One April Year-To-Date City Financial Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then next is provide a resolution providing for the adoption of an amended budget for the City of Bryant, Arkansas, for the twelve-month period ending, or twelve-month period beginning January one, two thousand twenty-one, and ending December thirty-one, January twenty-one, or December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. I'll spin it all out here in a minute, folks.
A motion to approve, and I have a question.
Tucker. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Miller, second by Hawk, and discussion.
Are the revenues back on track for water, wastewater, since we are making this move?
I actually had a question about that today, and I don't know. I didn't get a chance to figure it out before I came to the meeting tonight. So, but I can look it up for you guys and find out when they went into effect, and when we'll see the payment.
Okay.
I was, I'm thinking it's not, seeing the payments, not in the earnings numbers yet.
Okay.
But let me confirm that, and I'll let you guys know.
So this, there might be another adjustment then needed before we get caught back up?
You mean like a budget adjustment?
Or you think this might be it?
I think this might be it. I'm hoping this is.
Okay, good. Okay, that's all I have.
Any other questions?
On that, on this resolution, that AP Fund seven hundred? Is that what's left in the AP Fund?
No.
Okay, I just had.
There's some, basically, all of that's been obligated out. We just have not gotten it transferred out of there yet.
Got you. Okay, that's what I thought. I just saw that number.
And we're actually, I talked to Joy about that direction earlier this week. Well, I know we talked about it, that over the next, probably next month, we're gonna work to get all that transferred out. So it'll make her happy, even if it's years ago. Some accounts that she doesn't have to worry about. It'll make the audit a little bit easier next year. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That is Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash nine. Thank you, Joy. Next up is a cool little resolution.
Twenty grants. This is a grant to finish the guest park inclusive playground. Twenty twenty-two project, but we have to have a, we applied for grant in twenty twenty-one. We'll know in November if we win or not, but this will be part of our capital improvement expenditures in two thousand twenty-two and not this year.
Where is this gonna be located? Is it gonna be an extension of the park?
Yeah, there's a.
Already?
Right, it's the three pieces that were part of the original design that we weren't able to afford in phase one. So there's just three more areas that.
So it just connects on to what we've already got going?
Right, it's already, it's already.
Down the trail.
All the infrastructure's there. We just have to put in the four and play.
So the restrooms and everything will be, that's already in place, will service this whole area?
It's within the fenced-in areas.
Okay.
And it got a feature for several.
The grant covers all this, or is there?
It's fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty.
So that's the eighty, eighty-five.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, five. That's half.
There it is. Got it.
Congratulations.
I think we've got, I think we've got a good chance of it. Do you have that in your budget, at the eighty-four, five? Or would that be something you have to come? It'll be in two thousand twenty-two when we actually.
Yeah, no, but what I'm saying, for that budget, will you budget that in for your budget, or will you have to come back and ask?
Well, yeah, just like we've done in the past, I'll come back in two thousand twenty-two and ask for capital improvement objects, and this'll be one of those this second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Miller. Second by Ms. Meyer.
I like grants. Bring more.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And by the way, this is Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash ten. Not real spot on here for that. And next up is Police Department. Chief Menon asking for some help. I'll explain how this works.
So hopefully, you attach like sixty-something pages. You ever do that? I'm just. But I have people that do. This is the last step in basically modernizing our dispatch center. And we've already done the fiber lines into the building. We've put in the nine-one-one system last year. This is kind of a continuation of our aged-out radio program. The reason why this one is separate is because it's coming out of separate budget. So I'm not asking you for any money. That's the general funds we pay for out of the dispatch funds already there. This will take, there's three consoles in there. This will update all three of those consoles to state-of-the-art. This will hold us off for probably fifteen, twenty years. The stuff that's in there is getting close to twenty years old. It was in this building, and it moved over to that building in two thousand and seven, so it's gotta go. It's aged out. So this proposal by Motorola allows us to replace that. It is part of their lease agreement. It's not lease, it's finance, basically. And so we don't make a payment on it until after the first year, and then we'll have it paid off. Probably paid off in less than three years. We have three years to pay it off. We chose option one, gave a woman to the purr. There's option five, but honestly, with our budget, I think we can probably pay it off in less than three years. It's not coming from general funds, it's coming out of the zero-six-ten budget, and it'll be budgeted each year. Hopefully, the way our revenues are coming in, we'll be able to pay it off, probably two years, maybe.
So we take care of all City of Bryant nine-one-one calls only?
Yes.
But this is radio. This is, this, the nine-one-one system's already been upgraded.
This is our radio traffic, the police fire, the animal control.
This where the dispatchers call the radio.
So this is for police and fire?
Police, fire, animal control, COVID, anybody that talks on our radio system. This is, so the dispatchers have state-of-the-art radios that match up with the radios that y'all got for us last year that are in progress, being implemented. In case you're wondering about that, it's getting close. COVID has slowed that down because of the tower, a little bit of delay, but it's supposed to be done, still on track for.
Knock out some of our blackout areas.
Absolutely.
It should eliminate almost all of them.
All good.
We do, we already have our radios, so we're in process, Chief Jordan's got some of these tests, and we're putting new templates in them. But the radios have been here, so we're just waiting to get them out. Until we get the towers out, that's not gonna fix that problem, but this will just keep our nine-one-one center, basically, the system's in there now.
It'll bring it up to date.
Yeah, it's greatly out of date.
Two thousand and seven, I would think so.
No, that's when the building, nobody came over here, so it's older than that, so.
Oh, ma'am, is this made of motion? It does need. It does need a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve this for, Chief Mendon.
Second.
Have a motion, a second?
I have one more question.
Okay. A motion, a second for approval for Motorola radio consoles for the nine-one-one center. A motion by Hawk, second by Miller, and now discussion.
Just a quick question. It's a lease, but we're gonna own it.
It's really a finance, I, I said lease, it's really a finance, we're financing it.
I just noticed that that was written down here, that it was a lease, so we will actually own it at the end of the three-year?
We actually own it since we take place and read in there. It goes on our insurance, it's ours, we're just making payments on it, and there's no penalty for paying it off early.
I just wanted to make sure, 'cause sometimes leases, they come back at the end of them and you have a buyout.
Yeah, no, we actually, if you read on that one sheet, as soon as they put it in and we take ownership of it, it actually becomes the City of Bryant's.
Okay, thank you, that was my question.
Hearing no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
And now we're back to public works.
Time to update.
Human resources and public works.
Can imagine being that cool.
Why y'all give somebody moral support on this?
I have three jobs for Tim. The first two are more like restructures to current positions. We have employees holding an equipment operator two position and equipment operator one position. Industries and both of those employees have taken up out of the specialty, being the signals technician, which Tim can go in more detail about the importance of that. If you're interested in utilities locate technician. So we plan to convert, with your approval, convert those two positions that they hold into the specific roles of signals technician and utility locate. And then change, they won't, we won't have their equipment operator one or equipment operator two.
Those will be deleted?
Yes.
That was my question, if those two will be deleted. That's just the comparison, what we're.
Yes, yes, we have that question earlier in the year, so I started putting the range of the current or old position.
Thank you.
So you guys could see the differences, and I have the rates of the employees currently also, if you need, I'm gonna bring those up to you. Any questions about these, the first two?
Motion to approve. Item six on the, on the signals technician.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution to adopt new position description and compensation plan for signals technician. Second. And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion pa, opposed, say no, sorry. Motion passes. Resolution 2021-11.
Motion to approve the new position of utility locate technician.
Second. Have a motion by Ms. Miller for approval of the resolution to adopt a new position description and compensation plan for utility locate technician. And a second by Mr. Hawk. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, that is Resolution 2021-12.
And then the third position is a new position, that's why there's not an old range on the resolution for y'all. I believe that the mayor has spoken to you a little bit about this concept of developing this position for our Public Works Department. It is the water wastewater manager position. Anybody have any questions on that one?
A motion to approve the water wastewater manager position.
And a motion by Ms. Miller to approve resolution to adopt a new position description and compensation plan for a water wastewater manager. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second.
Try and set you some writing up until later.
So this position wasn't linked to anything previously?
No, sir, it's a brand-new position. It will help the water wastewater area with, with better management and to get some good experience in that area so we can meet the requirements of the C A W a little bit better, I think. Have a motion by Ms. Miller, a second by Ms. Sigmo, and any other discussion? Were you about to say something else?
Did we say that this was budget-neutral for this year?
Yes, this will be budget-neutral for this year based on the number of vacancies in public works right now. It'll definitely be budget-neutral, because they're tight. I think they're way short right now.
Oh, wow.
With water, on the water side, so.
So maybe these other two will.
Maybe these will.
Maybe help?
Can't hurt.
Well, those two are occupied.
I was gonna say, these are just new, these other two are moving people into these new positions.
Specifically doing those roles, but we still have.
They just had new names.
Yeah, yeah, those others are just renaming those prescriptions, making them more accurate.
And then upping the pay on them, right?
But, well, the adjustment was not much on that pay, but it's about the same.
But it's, it's small, it's slightly higher tickets to their new range, but.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
It won't change there, it won't affect their actual pay though, because they're already within that.
Oh, they are, okay. That was one of my questions, was is this gonna result in a?
No, those will not, those, item six and item seven are not. So we have a motion by Ms. Miller, and a second by Ms. Higginbotham for the resolution to adopt a new position description and compensation plan for a water wastewater manager. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all.
Can I verify one thing also?
Sure.
It's just that you have a lot of vacant positions that you're not getting people to apply for.
Yes.
Is that the number one?
Yes, but.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-one thirteen.
Thank you, okay.
And they, well, Public Works has the most current vacancies. They are not alone in having.
Oh, I know, I know. That's what, that was kind of my point is, is we could create positions all day long, but if people aren't applying for them,
Correct.
there's not a lot we can do about it. That was kind of my.
Yeah.
Correct. By the way, that, that last resolution is Resolution 2021-13.
Okay.
By the way, don't get in trouble with it.
Thank you.
All right, now we're lucky enough, this time for council comments, because they come on the list for mayor comments this month for some reason. That's cool though. So y'all get first thing, council comments. Y'all got any comments? Y'all wanna say anything in council comments?
I was just gonna say the Wings Over Bryant, but Jason got it this, this month.
Way past one.
Wade, you have one?
Yeah, I can't believe so. How do we need to proceed with the C A W information?
Well, the next step is, just coming up month, we'll have a workshop with the Celine, with the water, Celine Water Authority that we talked about. And then from there, we will talk about what y'all want to do.
But we're not setting a date tonight, 'cause she's still waiting on one person to.
Yes, correct.
We're leaning towards everybody being able to accommodate your date. We'll just cancel the regular meetings and call a special meeting for that night. I think that's brought up for their meeting, but we're still, I'm still waiting on a couple people this different time.
What dates that?
It'll be tonight.
We'll be able to address the issues with the port concern.
I, that, I don't know. I know that most of our report of concerns went through, there were some issues with it just having a lag time. I think that that was just.
Okay. I just thought maybe it's overwhelmed, but.
And that's very welcome in. I don't know if sure it got an answer back on that, but as far as I know, it's working fine now.
Well, trying to get all the people that had the flood stuff to still turn their names in, 'cause they're not on this map.
Yeah, we're not on that map, and these are all the people that turned their names in, that's what I was gonna break up with y'all. This map, I had, I had Coleman do this for y'all, if there's one of the council comments, you have anything? I brought this up, 'cause I wanted to show y'all the comparison basically between 2017 and 2021.
Yeah, that's big.
As you can see, 2017 is the blue dots, 2021 are the yellow dots, and the green dots are places that flooded both years. Now, I'm aware that between 2021 and 2017, there was another flood event. We don't have that information on this, but we can probably try to work to get that if we can. It was not quite as big of a flood as 2017 or 2021, so we didn't seem to have very many houses flooded at all during that time, if I remember right. But it was really interesting, the distrib, the distribution of this, though.
I have a question, to qualify, people that made this list, the water breached their house?
On this list, yes, these are areas where water was inside a house.
So one of my neighbors, hers was within feet of her house, but it didn't make her house?
The Arkansas Department of Emergency Management does a report, they did back in 2017, that they really clearly put it, if the water gets in the house, if there's damage within the house that makes it worth it, displaces people, that's what they trigger on. And so that's what we generated our list off, back in 2017, and same way on this one. If we got reports that it was in the house, that's what those addresses come to. So even though the, Celine County was out collecting information, people that sent that to us, we made sure that they got it as well. So if there is a lag in report concern, and we see stuff where people are getting stuff in the house, we'll make sure that information gets transferred to them as well. It's real important that, that if you hear from that, that we get that information or get it directly to them, because that helps us generate those maps and we, we trigger our projects off of those.
Yeah, 'cause there was a bunch on Lee Circle in 2017, it's not on here.
We only got one report of a house that flooded.
'Cause I was down there with the police department and the fire involved, duty firemen and everything else slinging sandbags.
If they're reporting, like I said, anything, I know a lot of times people, they don't know what to do. We try to, and we announce on there, is if you got a house flooded, please report it either through report concern or directly to the county.
Yeah, I think people didn't know. I mean, I would venture to guess if I asked my neighbor if she knew she was supposed to do report of concern. And she's having trouble emailing me pictures, so I don't think she, I mean, I know she didn't, you know what I'm saying?
Sure, I understand.
First thing she didn't wanna do is jump on the computer.
Thank you, thank you, RJ.
She had other things she was worried about.
Yeah.
Yes.
Bailing.
But I think, you know, Hilltop was on Channel Seven News with a car underwater. Yeah, and Hilltop is free on road, I mean, and that's kind of what we do, is we pick these things now, yeah, house flooding is one of the things. And kind of our tiered is public safety. If we have intersections that are flooding, how, vehicles that are flooding off the road, that's our most critical thing. Because at some point, emergency vehicle like ambulances, fire trucks gotta get through there, so we give those a higher priority. Next one, if people are getting displaced out of their house, that's way up there. And then towards the line, if it's in the yard, we're concerned, but it's really those first two.
Okay.
And there's a project that was, I think, behind the map.
Yeah, so that's kind of showing our, our ongoing. If you kind of look, we've ramped up over the years, it's how much that we spend on that. From 2018, we spent around a half a million dollars. You know, on our, for our utility fee, just to keep that in perspective, we collect about $220,000. So that money all the years, some of the street fund. And if we've identified some very serious projects, we've took care of, last year, the mayor released a billion dollars of, of the general, general. Turn that near the.
The general fund.
There you go, thank you. Boy, we should be that obvious. And we spent it, and so, and then we've identified multiple projects going forward. If you look at the bottom total, what we anticipate is $10 million. I mean, and there's, there's, there's projects that pop up, there'll be more projects that pop up as a result of this map, so. Is there, is there a way, Mayor, that if, that we could post this, the completed projects and future projects on the website? Because I think, I think that residents would like to see, you know, if their area is being worked on. Troy capitalized on that, he's the author of the biggest part of this list, and he, he will be on his. If we could just put it somewhere on the website, I don't know if that's possible.
I think any of them are on there, is that possible, maybe it'll be updated?
We haven't updated them in quite a while, that's because of transition and things that may go on, but I think we actually need to take this list as a whole and put it on there.
This is a good reading.
There's a project page, so we'll get it updated and get it out on there, and I'll share it when it's ready.
Imagine people, if they see it and report, come on that list.
Next, the next thing I just passed out to y'all is information that I didn't want, I wanted to still do us thunder on that. We received this information today with sales tax for this month, we got it this morning.
This is your prediction, you're in trouble. It's gonna drop to nothing.
I noticed that too.
That's why we're budgeting for that.
Lord's coming.
So we're gonna have to bring some money back from council, I'm sorry. So anyway, as you can see, we are up a little bit from last year, which is, you know, this time, for this month of last year, so.
That's nice.
Things are still progressing like we hoped they would this year. We attribute that, or at least I'm attributing it, honestly, mostly to online sales. 'Cause we really started getting that this year.
Yeah.
Maybe it ends up last year, but it's online sales tax.
And we're not able to tell specifically if it's coming.
Not yet, but there's some legislation that can, went through, the legislature this year, with this last session, that will give us, allow us to get a little bit more information.
That'd be interesting.
So we'll be able to see a little bit more about where this is coming from, so we can.
I can tell you my wife is just gonna.
I feel fairly certain I'm giving you thousands of dollars this year.
I know I'm doing some of my, my share as well, based on the stops of E P S and stuff.
That's great.
Also, this Saturday, Delta Biscuit, Biscuit Compton will be at the Farmer's Market from eight to 12, if y'all are interested in some good breakfast. June 6th, we'll be coffee with the Merritt Mills Park, and Mobile Rec with, will be there as well. And we're going to talk about this.
June 6th or June 5th?
June 6th.
Sunday?
June 6th is Sunday? I looked at my calendar, did I look at it wrong?
June 5th is.
Whatever the Saturday is, how's that?
Because my grandmother's getting married.
Okay, June 5th it is, then, my apologies. Hey, if you've listened to Monday's minutes the last two weeks, I called it April, so it's okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
Reemphasize, June 19th, or is it 18th? I'm gonna get my calendar.
June 19th.
June 19th.
But the VIP party is June 18th.
Okay, VIP party, June 18th, June 19th is Wings Over Bryant. I can't emphasize that enough, it will be a lot of fun. And we were receiving emails this week from RDOT about this, July 8th. And we'll push this information out to council, as well as to the general public, with regard to a public meeting on the Highway Five widening project, basically from Bryant to Palasque County line, which that includes the intersection that everybody in the world is concerned with. Which is the Parkway and Highway Five intersection.
We shared some information, but we'll start pushing it hard, following that gene.
And it's still gonna be virtual?
It still will be virtual, yes.
Is that, is that still talking about the current stuff that they're doing, or the new project?
The new project.
Do you have any updates? Do you have any updates for RDOT on the current Highway Five project拡展?
It's gonna last probably another 12.
No, I get that, it just, it just seems like they just stopped, and.
That's the utilities.
Their, their new schedule date is April 2026.
Okay, I just was, somebody emailed me today and asked, like, it looks like everybody just stopped working, and, and so.
That's what it looks like.
I had some utility.
I'm just passing on information from concerned people.
Their current schedule is for completion, April 2026, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, right.
The orange barrels might be gone by then.
And in addition, in June, mid-June, is the A M L Conference. It will be virtual again this year, it is free to sign up for council members. I urge you to sign up if you can. It is the perfect place to get that training that was mentioned earlier, just saying.
I did the virtual one last year, and it's real easy, 'cause I could do it.
Yeah, you could always just let her run and not listen, you know, but I would never be a proponent of that. Just saying, I didn't say that out loud.
I'm registered, so.
Oh, with that, I'm through with the mayor's comments, uh.
Well, you got it, dismisses, 'cause you're last.
I understand, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
We're done.
I'll get calmed out with this. I'll call Brendan in a second.